December 19th, special call, board meeting to order. First on the agenda is the pledge of the night, Mr. Doug Bowden.
The United States of America, in the name of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Meeting, call meeting tonight was for talking about land purchase on Highway 96.
Mr. Lee, would you mind going over the size of land, the various information that we currently have? I know you did it the other night, but we'd like for you to do it again.
Yes, sir. We're looking at a piece of property that is approximately a mile and two tenths from Veterans Parkway. It is 154 acres. Of this, 154 acres, approximately 124 to 125 are usable, and we're proposing this site for two schools, a middle school and a high school.
Anything about the sewer? I think you mentioned that.
Yes, sir. We have reached out to Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. They have stated that we will be able to tie into the sewer at Veterans Parkway. We will be using a pump station, sole source just for us and for two schools, and we'll do a pressurized system back to the manhole along Highway 96.
I think this was one of the areas we've been looking for at least two years, probably longer than that. I think maybe three years or more. When we look at the area out in the Blackman, the Stewart's Creek, in that area, we currently have a middle school, in Blackman Middle School, that has 1,600 students, give or take a few depending on the time of day, and they're going to continue to grow there because when we look at our feeders to Blackman Middle, they continue to grow. And this is after adding that addition. If Blackman Middle School was actually a high school, they would be participating in inter-scholastic athletics in 6A or close to it, 5A, between 5A and 6A. That's a huge school.
Yes, sir. We added the annex there approximately six years ago, and that annex is basically now full.
Although Stewart's Creek is not a middle, is not at capacity, I think you shared with me some information about what is being proposed in that area.
Yes, sir. Stewart's Creek Middle is, they're not quite there yet, but they're very close to being at capacity. Presently, under construction is a little over 800 homes, right there on the Morton Road, right there within two miles of the school. That entire area would all be zoned to Stewart's Creek. There's also a new subdivision at the corner of One Mile Lane and Baker Road, approximately 200 homes. It's presently under construction, and they're selling those houses faster than they can get them put up. So, in the foreseeable future, what's been approved and presently under construction, we're looking at 1,000-plus homes that are in that Stewart's Creek zone alone.
And what kind of impact has the, what's it, Blackman Farm? Oh, not Blackman. What's the one over on Blackman Road that's been, that currently has homes coming in?
That's coming into, that's 300 to 400 homes there, and it's there on, it's Blackman Road, right there, backs up to the interstate.
Right. What's the name of that?
I just, my daughter lives over there, and I drove right by it the other night and looked at it so I could remember it at this.
Shelton Farms.
Shelton Farms, that's it. Shelton Farms.
Mm-hmm.
And there's two new apartment complexes at...
Manson Pine?
At the intersection of Baker Road and Blackman Road, right there at eight, between 840 and Blaze Fortress. There's two new, there's two new apartment complexes going in there now. They haven't started leasing, but they're under construction.
The one's kind of currently is behind the, right past Blackman Rec Center, whatever they call that, Blackman Community Center.
Yes, sir.
It's behind that. It kind of pushes up next to borders that, either the bus area, whether the bus, was it Thomas Buses up there?
Yes, sir, back in there. There's also, we got information from the county the other day on Old Nashville Highway that is going to be zoned Blackman or Stewart's Creek. It's kind of in that crossover zone. There's another couple hundred houses coming in there.
Could this also possibly help Rockville Middle?
I would think the zoning would be that we would position this, that we would pull mostly from Blackman and Stewart's Creek, and you would pull enough students from Blackman that you could rezone from Rockville Middle back to Blackman.
And I think what it would do is it would cross over, it would probably bring Blackman Middle's zone line more closely aligned with Blackman High School.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Hodge, are you sure?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I have several questions. Ask the board's patience with me, if you will. First of all, I guess I'm still, I still really don't feel like I have the question answered, and Mr. Chairman, this question, I guess, or Mr. Director, is for you. You know, we found out less than a week ago that we'd made the decision to go look at this land on Saturday, and then we got notice 48 hours before tonight that we were going to hold this meeting. The week before Christmas, I don't know if I'm the only board member that had to cancel or change plans around to be here tonight. So, first question on my list is, what's the rush with this? Why was it so necessary that we had to 48 hours in advance say, "We're going to have a meeting about this"? Please help me understand.
I think, to answer your first question, we've been looking for land for a long time out that way. I think the information we just provided you with the, where we're overcrowded at Blackman Middle, we're overcrowded at Rockville Middle, we cannot put any more portals at Rockville Middle, and when this came up, I think, Mr. Lee, you had an emergency that you had to go out with our original date. If I'm not mistaken, you want to share that with us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Spurlock, when this land became more viable, we had anticipated going to look at this property two weeks before we did, but my best friend passed away in Virginia, and I was unable to make that date, and this was our next available date that we could use.
I'm very sorry to hear that, Mr. Lee, but again, I still, yes, I understand, Mr. Director, that we've been looking for land for a long time, and I'm not questioning at all whether or not we need a piece of property for a middle school and high school in that area, but again, my question is, why the rush that we had to meet tonight?
Ms. Michaels, can you, and you're going to have to help me on this, what was the date that Mr. Lee showed the land to us on the PowerPoint? Do you know what date that was?
Last Thursday. I believe it was last Thursday.
Was it last Thursday, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, 12:12.
Twelve.
Was this not something, though, that could have waited until after the first of the year? I guess, I think my question's being missed, but that's all right. I'll just move on then. My next question is, and Mr. Lee, you may have answered this, but help clarify for me because I know there's a number of acres on this piece of property that are not going to be usable. How many of the acres, again, are federally protected wetlands?
They are designated, but I do not know that they have a federal designation as of yet. They very possibly may under further investigation, but they have been designated based on soil classification, and the answer's between 25 and 30 acres.
Okay. And that's 25, 30 acres of this that we can't build anything on?
That is correct.
Okay. How many of the acres on this property are actually in the floodplain? One of my concerns is, I know the Royal Glen subdivision, which is, I think, probably not much more than maybe two tenths, three tenths of a mile from this property, was the same subdivision that got evacuated a couple of years ago because of the flooding. So, my question is, is this in a floodplain, and if so, how much of it? And what kind of impact, or have there been any studies done on what this could do when you put all that kind of weight and the new dirt and everything on that piece of property? What kind of flood damage could it possibly still have ramifications for, for that subdivision?
The answer, the first question is, the photo, the information that I gave you last week, the very first drawing I showed you was from the 2010 flood. That shows the height of the water. All of this water is basically contained on these 30 acres that we cannot use, so there's no additional impact to us individually. Secondly, per TDEC, any property that we build on, any developer, not just us, any developer that builds, cannot change the rate of flow that stormwater leaves the property prior to construction. So, whatever volume leaves this property now is the rate that we will be required for the stormwater to leave that at the same rate. So, we cannot increase the impact on the subdivisions downstream.
Okay.
Mr. Lee, if you will, would you repeat how many acres were in the floodplain again?
About 30.
Can practice fields, things of that nature, be utilized?
We believe so, yes. We couldn't build anything, but most of our middle school practice fields are basically mowed areas. We presently have the ones at Stewart's Creek Middle, there's two or three other schools that their actual practice fields are actually in floodplains.
In our last three school campus, are we at Rockville? Are we pushed there as far as practice fields? Are we tight there?
Yes, sir. We're very tight.
Okay. A few more questions, please. I want to talk a little bit about the development. You spoke earlier about the subdivisions and the plan for homes that might overcrowd those other middle schools. Has there been any conversation at all about the proposal, or at least the information that we're hearing that there may be 2,000 new homes developed on Burgess Farms coming in the future? And what that would do to the traffic impact of this as well?
That project has still not been approved by the city. It is under consideration. It has been talked about. However, there has been no formal plan submitted to either the City of Murfreesboro or to Rutherford County at this time. But yes, it will have an impact.
So, it's obviously going to have a huge impact on traffic because, you know, we're talking a two-lane, no-shoulder road, and I know you shared with us, Mr. Lee, that T-DOT is considering, you know, widening that stretch of highway from, what, Veterans to Triune?
Yes, ma'am.
But do we have any guarantee at this point that that's going to happen from them? Do we have anything in writing?
We do not. The City of Murfreesboro does, and it's supposed to start in the next 12 to 14 months, and the intent, according to the city, is that it's going to start at Triune and come back toward Murfreesboro.
So, do we know a completion date, and would we know for sure that it would be completed before we open these schools? Either way?
My guess would be it would not, at least for the first school.
That it wouldn't be finished. So, what's the timeline again for these schools? I was, I had meant to ask, and I didn't, to see our actual building plan as far as when this, these particular schools are...
Let me answer that. We do not have our current building program is, has them in 2022, 2023, but all of our building programs, what, we haven't sat down, Mr. Lee and I will sit down once we determine whether we buy the property, we do not buy the property, and we would probably do some amendment, perhaps, maybe not, and obviously bring it back before the board for approval.
Typically, we begin looking at our building program based on our current number after the first of the year. It's what we've done fairly typically in the past, and then we take that information that we've received from those new numbers from this year and re-prioritize what schools go when.
Well, and one of the reasons I'm asking these questions, and I'm sure it's something all the other board members have thought about, but I keep going back to some very, very unhappy county commissioners with us over the last land purchase, and all the concern that was expressed by Commissioner Phillips, as well as some others, about not having those conversations with the commission first about road impact studies and so on, traffic studies and so on, before we made a decision on any piece of property like this.
I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the, whatever motion is brought forward tonight would be to enter into negotiations for the land.
Yes, sir.
But prior to purchasing the land, it's our intent to bring it through the committees to the full commission. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's all we're trying, that's the purpose of tonight, is to determine whether we want to pursue purchasing this property.
Okay. And I understand, but again, that takes me back to my question of why the rush, because Health and Ed doesn't even meet again until the 4th Thursday in January, so, but one more question, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Hodge. Do you know if there is a real estate agent that's representing the city for the sale of this land?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
I would not be privy to that type of information.
Okay.
Mr. Hodge?
Mr. Lee's pretty well answered two of my questions anyhow. My third, basically, the first question I had was, are 30 acres that good for anything else? But then another question I had was, how something we need to build on this land? But the last question, about that 154 acres, I know you said 30 acres could go for ball field, practice field, or whatever. How much, how much land would it take for an elementary? Is there any possibility to get an elementary on there too, if you needed to, or?
I don't believe so, no, sir. There's a possibility is that there's 25 acres behind this piece of property, that the owner was, had mentioned at one time they were wanting to sell to the city. I have not pursued anything on that till we see a little bit further about how this went, and that 25 acres, I'm still not sure that we could get an elementary if we were to purchase that as well.
What if we looked at two-story? Not necessarily elementary, but maybe middle school, definitely high school.
Our high school, the majority of the schools two-story already, like Rockville. When we did the analysis on the middle school, we have looked at what it would do if we went to a two-story middle school, and it would save us about two to three acres. Presently, it would cost us more to go up than the cost of the land. Typically, in a building analysis, when you want to determine whether you build one story or two, if it costs more to go up than what your land is costing you, then typically you do not, and I don't know that three acres, I don't think three acres in a middle school would be enough to get us an elementary on this piece of property. It's something we can look at, you know, further, once we know, get some more testing done, but sitting here tonight, I think I would feel comfortable telling you two schools, and that it's possible, but I wouldn't count on it.
I think you answered this already, but just for clarification purposes, if in the event, this was some property that the board would want to pursue, and it was approved by the commission, would our first school be a middle school, I'm assuming?
Based on our current numbers, I would see that we would request a middle school, and that the high school would probably be sometime out.
Yes, sir.
I know we have spent a lot of time in this area looking for land, and we have not been successful. Is there any other land out there that you know of in that area?
We've looked at three different pieces. The first piece Mr. Clardy had brought to y'all, which was on the corner of 840 and 96 and backed up, and that had a lot of caves and sinkholes. We've looked at a piece of property on Newman Road, a little over 400 acres. There's, according to the soils analysis from the county, there's not enough good soil there to do our own step system. The water would be similar to Tan Oaks, it would need upgrading and that sort of thing, but there's just, sewer was our problem there. We looked at another piece of property down further from this. Mr. Stuart Conway had put together three or four pieces of property and brought them to us, and we've looked at those, and according to our engineers, there's not enough dirt there as well, and it would, the site work would be costly. He's come back with a number of proposals. He'd be willing to work with us or, you know, do some other things, but it's, the site works and the lack of dirt. The further out we go on 96, the less dirt there is. We've looked all the way over, you know, out Ammival Road, almost to Ammival. There's only two or three pieces of property out through there that even have enough dirt for a sewer system. Since I've been involved with this, I've made contact with those owners to see if they'd even be willing to sell, and at this time, they're not.
I drove by the property again today and looked at it. The curb appeal is good. I mean, it's got great curb appeal. Looks like there's plenty of soil all around. And, yeah, I mean, if there's other options out there, I'd be all ears and want to listen to what we've got available, but I'm like you, I don't think there's a lot available out there. What is available has already been purchased and probably being developed, so, yeah, I'm saying if we probably don't move fast on this, we may lose out on this property, too.
Question, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Lee, who will, if we enter into an agreement, who will do the negotiations as far as what we pay for the property?
Mr. Reed can correct me if I'm wrong. I think basically what you would do tonight is authorize the board chairman to begin talking with the city. I have reached out to the city to see how their process works. They basically don't negotiate. It's not a negotiation. We would determine what we would consider as what we're willing to offer. There would be a formal offer drawn up by Mr. Reed that would be submitted to the city mayor, to the assistant, to the city manager and the assistant city manager, then they would take that number and that request to their city board, and then they would vote on it yes or no. If they voted on it yes, then we would, you know, begin the process. They vote on it no, then you would have to decide if you wanted to increase your price or, you know, come up with another price. It's not a negotiated type situation with the city.
So, they paid $25,000 per acre, if my memory serves me right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we know how much of the geo-studies and things that they've done, how much they've done, and how, what's the fee at this point on that?
To my knowledge, they've done three separate geo-tests and one wetlands test. I do not know those costs. They are willing to show us exactly what they paid. They're asking that we reimburse, we would reimburse them for that cost only, and that's something we would have, we would pay for and do ourselves anyway, and they have been very forthcoming. They've made those reports available to us, and we've reviewed those reports, and we've also had our engineers look at those reports.
So, even though there's going to be 30 acres at $25,000 an acre that we can't use, we're basically going to use them, there's no negotiation in the price?
No, ma'am. The board would determine what they're willing to pay, and then they would write the offer up to them.
And the city has owned this property how long?
2017.
2017.
And no developers have snapped it up?
They've tried.
That, I don't, yes, they've tried, and they have not been willing to sell to a developer.
Do we know what development companies they approached them and what the offers were, if any?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Just for clarification, we actually, back, must have been a year or so ago...
About this time last year.
Mr. Clardy, when Mr. Clardy and I went and talked to them about the land, and they weren't...
They weren't interested in selling.
They weren't interested in selling it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate the questions of my fellow board members tonight. I wish we would have asked these same kind of questions when we made the decision to buy the Tan Oaks property and when we bought the Matthews property, which were just kind of a shoo-in situation, so I appreciate the questions that we're asking here today. To the road out there on 96, it's not unlike every other school system that we have. We've got 99, which is a two-lane road for the Rockville schools, so 96, that is a state road, so the state will participate. It won't be fully on the back of the county, will it, in expanding that road?
That is correct.
Okay. And we're not expecting to build schools that are any larger than, say, Rockville or Stewart's Creek. We're looking at the same capacity, so although 96 has a different degree of traffic, 99 has its own unique traffic, as does 231, which is a heavily traveled road, we're not looking to build any excessive schools here. We're looking at the same kind of population, correct?
You would be looking at a Stewart's Creek Middle or a Rockville Middle and a Rockville High, basically. If the board does not change their mind, I would recommend we would use those same two footprints.
Perfect. So, as far as the county is concerned, then the county is already made aware that those roads are going to be expanded, 96 would be expanded to accommodate whatever traffic they're expecting anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a word about the roads, just to, well, when, they had a meeting on this very subject, and Mr. Clardy was there, and he addressed them twice. I believe our director was there, and he addressed the commission twice, and the roads superintendent, Mr. Brooks, was there, and I think he addressed the commission twice. And the problem was that Commissioner Jeff Phillips, as Moore talked about just a minute ago, he wanted to know the total cost of the Christiana project, and he was including roads as part of that total cost. And I get his point. He's got to come up with the money, or the county commission does, to do that very thing. The problem was, he was asking the wrong people. We don't build roads, but he was also asking for more communication with Mr. Brooks, and I understand Mr. Brooks, the roads superintendent, is busy on those roads toward the Tan Oaks project right now.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how his budget is coming along, but I can guarantee you that had to be a hit at some point, or it's going to hit him at some point. Well, we just, we need to make sure, and they did ask this question that night, two or three times, that we communicate with the superintendent of roads, construction, transportation and whatnot, and that we are looking at this property, and this is where it would be. Also, and I don't know who told me this, but there's, maybe you know, Mr. Lee, there was some discussion about the two-lane road from Triune to Veterans Parkway, for all intents and purposes, could start at Veterans Parkway. There was some discussion about turning it around, doing this, this part first. If they did, of course, my point is, it would go, the first mile and a half, it would go to these schools that we're talking about, but I don't know if that's going to happen or not, of course.
The city has mentioned that there's a possibility that they could approach T-DOT and that they, I don't know what the process is, but there is a process to change it from starting at Triune to starting at Veterans Parkway. I don't know what that process is at this time.
But to me, it'd benefit a whole lot more people a lot faster if they started at Veterans Parkway rather than starting at Triune. If you want to get to Triune, I wouldn't go down that way anyway. I can go, I can go out 840. I mean, I, you know, why would I want food with that? But anyway, maybe not. So, I was just pointing out that we might get a break there.
And I agree with you, Mr. Jordan. You would want to spread out your traffic going in and coming out of a larger municipality.
Anyone else?
One more question, Mr. Lee. If we decide to move forward on this, I take it the next process is you're going to do further testing and basically, I guess, get with the architect as far as placement on the, if it'll work or not. If all this is going to fit, if it's going to work out on this particular piece of land, I guess what I'm getting at, if that doesn't work out, we can walk away, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we start the process of vetting this property on Highway 96 for future Rutherford County schools.
Second.
Got a motion to start the process on purchasing this property, and a second. I've got a question. If you start the process, are you going to work from a figure tonight, or not? Do you need to have a figure in your process to move forward, Lee?
I don't think you would have to necessarily, you could.
Say up to, or?
You could say up to, or not to exceed, or something along those lines. You agree with that? I'd rather defer to Mr. Reed.
If I heard the motion, the motion was to vet this property for the possible purchase for a school site, so if you're vetting the property for a school site, that's really testing and engineering and that type of stuff, you may want to see how that comes back before you price it, and then come back with a price after you have that study done or some more analysis done. If you're interested in tying it up, you might talk to the city, say, if you can get it tied up with them, so they don't sell it to someone else while you're going through this process.
You think we could get that arranged, get them to hold the property till we get through this process?
I have not had that discussion with them, but I think they probably would.
Yeah, because I think the way the motion was actually laid out was a little different than, Mr. Chairman didn't have the word "purchase" in it, so to me, that's going to have a great deal of bearing on whether or not I'm willing to vote for this. I'm willing to vote to further vet it, but not to start purchase pricing discussions tonight.
The motion I heard was the process to begin the vetting of this property for the purchase of a school site.
Correct.
If that's what is intended.
That's what we need.
If that's what you're wanting to do tonight, then yes.
Hey, then we've got our motion in a second.
Could someone restate the motion, please, just to make sure we're clear on it?
Sure.
What I have is a motion to begin the process of vetting this property for the possible purchase of a school, for it as a school site.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Okay, Ms. Michaels, call row.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes, to vet. Yes, to vet.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Okay, we have any other business?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make three or four real quick points here, just to, it may be helping out one person, I don't know whether we are or not, but as far as the land and houses and that sort of thing, and where you're going to go to school, I would suggest that although a, one of our, any of our wonderful realtors will tell you where you're zoned to go to school, it might be a good idea to double-check that, just a thought. I never buy a house anywhere with the expectation that the, that house is going to remain zoned for that school forever. That would not be my only reason. There are plenty of great places to live, but I think I told you last year that where I live, which is right behind Bellwood School, that I've been zoned, we don't have any teenagers, regrettably, but I've been zoned to Blackman twice, Riverdale once, and now we can add Rockvale. So, in 20 years, we've been up to four schools, and I haven't moved, so it might be a good idea to check all that. I also wouldn't think that you would not be rezoned, or, because you went to, I'll use Siegel as an example, if you were zoned and you moved in, you went to Siegel Middle School, a wonderful place to go to school, by the way, but don't just assume that because you went to Siegel Middle School, you're going to Siegel High School, because you might not. And the zoning lines will tell you that. And the second, the last thing I want to say is, I think we need to continue this land search seemingly forever. We don't need to come back in a year or two and say, "Well, we're going to need some land in, you know, three years," or whatever it may be, after we get through with Tan Oaks and whatever, wherever we build, Matthews or whatever. I think the time to start now is, I think, looking right now would be a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good point, Mr. Jordan.
I appreciate all the questions tonight, by the way. Really excellent.
Okay. There's no other business. Hope everyone has a Merry Christmas. We're adjourned.